We'll now call the regular meeting of Long Poak City Council for Tuesday, December 3rd, 2019 to order from closed session. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Mosby.
Present.
Councilmember Vega.
Here.
Councilmember Cordova.
Present.
Mayor Protam Dirk Starbuck.
Present.
Mayor Janelle Osborne.
Here. City Attorney, any reportable action from closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. The City Council met with staff on the three items on the closed session agenda: one conference with labor negotiators, significant exposure to litigation in two cases, and one matter initiation of litigation. The City Council had a discussion with staff on both, on all three of those items, but no reportable action was taken.
Thank you. Pastor Jeff Harrington, please come forward. Let's rise for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Almighty Creator, in the Savior's name, I thank you for the privilege of prayer, the ability to come before you on behalf of our government officials. You tell us to pray for them in the difficult process of governing, and I ask for your blessing upon them as they lead the city. Father, they need your wisdom, which you promised to give without account. They need strength of conviction to make the decisions, no matter how difficult, which are necessary for Long Poak to thrive and to serve its whole community well. I ask for them to display courage in making decisions which will upset some but benefit all. Help them, Father, not to focus on the problems, but to be diligent, vigilant, and discerning in discovering solutions. They are in place by your hand, and I pray for them as such. Bless them tonight and in all future decisions. Amen.
Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to your republic, to its stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. City Manager, report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple items tonight. We have the zoning code. As of today, the final zoning code is available on the Planning Division webpage, which will allow the public an early review of the code prior to the adoption hearing on December 17th. Any questions regarding the final zoning code can be directed to our Planning Manager, Brian Halverson. I wanted to make sure everyone knew due to the possible rain this week. Let everyone know that the Long Poak Valley Children's Christmas Season Parade is still expected to take place this Friday evening, December 6th at 6:00 p.m., even, you know, with the slight chance of rain. But should weather conditions on Friday necessitate the cancellation of the parade, meaning there's rain, we'll notify you as soon as possible via our city website and social media channels. So check that before you maybe go out to see if it's continuing on. And lastly, for our library, we're kicking off the Long Poak Library Fine Free Holidays Program. In an effort to welcome people back to the library with a clean slate, the goal is to get as many items returned as possible so that everyone can enjoy the library and what it has to offer. Patrons are invited to return items from the Long Poak Branch, Vandenberg Village Branch, or Bookmobile to either library from December 2nd through January 2nd, and the fees will be waived. However, just a note, all returned materials must be undamaged and in good condition to be used by others. And that was all I had for the day.
Thank you. We'll now move to public comment on the consent calendar. The consent calendar is considered to be routine and enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the council vote. Any items withdrawn from consent calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communication is near the end of the meeting. Floor is now open for public comment on consent calendar. Seeing no one rise, we'll close public comment on consent calendar and bring it back to council. Councilmember Mosby.
I'd like to pull item number four.
Item four has been pulled. Any other items? Seeing none, I entertain a motion. Councilmember Starbuck.
I'll move accept consent items one, two, and three.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussions? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. We will discuss item four after item five. Since there are no staff presentations, announcements, or requests, we'll move to oral communications regarding city matters other than what is on the council agenda. If you have an item you'd like to speak to that's not on the agenda, please come forward.
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Long Poak. A couple of meetings ago, the city manager, or maybe it was the last meeting, announced that there were several cameras up for the demolition of the old pool. Now that that is down, I would like to request council to take those cameras and make them available to the police department to be placed in some of the areas where we're still having problems. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nick Nikolenko, resident of Long Poak. As a lot of you may know, yesterday, this town experienced yet another shooting. This one across the street from the high school or a block away, but maybe they found the victim across the street from the high school. And it was a teenager once again. Ours, our city police officers, they've been inept with finding these people who've decided to carry out violence on our communities. We've got suspects outstanding for various homicides within the city. And this tax that's being proposed is being marketed as public service, but it's not really for public service, is to pay off debt. So I and several other members of this community would like to see more transparency, transparency between the city council, the people in charge of our affairs, and the residents, so that the residents know what's really happening, what's really happening with tax dollars, and so there's accountability. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no one else rise, we'll close oral communications and move on to Agenda Item Number Five: Discussion and Direction Regarding Reimbursement of Development Impact Fees Assessed Against Projects for Accessory Dwelling Units, as requested by Councilmember Starbuck. And we have our City Attorney, Jeff Malave, to provide that discussion.
Evening, council. At the November 5th, 2019, City Council meeting, the City Council adopted a development impact fee resolution for accessory dwelling units pursuant to a new state law that prevented cities, that prevents cities from charging any impact fees for accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, that are less than 750 square feet in size. That new law takes effect on January 1st, 2020. In response to a claim by a developer who had built one of these ADUs that's less than 750 square feet, the council decided at that same council meeting to reimburse her the $7,191.60 in impact fees for her ADU. At the same council meeting, Councilmember Starbuck requested that we bring back this item for the council to consider refunding the three other ADU impact fees that were charged to three other applicants, once the city started charging impact fees for ADUs. Those are ADUs that were constructed at 306 South B Street, 420 West Cypress, and 713 East Lemon. Those impact fees that were paid to the city were for the amounts in that same order: $4,966.10, $4,800.04, and $4,774.40. All of those are less than 750 square feet. So, under the new law that takes effect January 1st, the city would not have been able to charge any impact fees for any of those three ADUs. So, council's decision tonight is whether to reimburse those three fees that were paid to the city for those ADUs. The council technically is not required to because the new law has not come into effect yet, but the council has requested this item to decide whether it would like to. There is a school district fee that is charged for each of these ADUs, but that fee is a school district fee that's paid to the school district, so the city's not able to refund those school district fees. And if these applicants would like to seek reimbursement of those school district fees, they would need to seek that from the school district. If we reimburse these fees, the reimbursement is going to be expensed against the various development impact fee funds which those fees were deposited into. And the city's general fund would end up covering the cost that would have otherwise been paid for by those fees. So that concludes the staff report. I'm available for questions. And otherwise, decision's up to the council tonight.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, please stop me if I tread into the closed session aspect with Mrs. Long, but the whole reason I wanted to bring this back was because of the fact that we did agree to reimburse fees with her. These other three people that built the ADUs, I feel that it's fair consideration to give them the same treatment that we gave to Mrs. Long. This is impact fees. This is not general fund. This is money that would be put away and held. And it's just not right that we take the money from three people. It says that they were notified. I don't know if they're here. But in order to discuss this, it had to have been requested and brought up from the closed session. So I obviously am going to say, let's refund the money. Fair for one, fair for the others. There was others built at the same time that paid no impact fees. So suddenly, there's like, oh, something. So this should be a very short discussion, I hope, and we just make it right and we refund the impact fees for the other three ADUs.
So just for clarification, this is only the impact fees. This isn't any of the fees that are needed and have to be paid for processing a permit for building, and that it's simply reimbursing impact fees that went to very specific accounts associated with those impact fees.
That's my understanding. Finance Director might be able to correct me if I'm wrong, but that's my understanding.
And that's more for the public to understand that we're waiving impact fees. We're not waiving permit fees that are required of everyone to pay for the processing of building plans and the building department and permitting for occupancy. Sorry, losing my voice again. Thank you. Any other questions for staff before we open for public comment? Seeing none, we'll open the floor for public comment. You have three minutes on this topic if you'd like to step to the microphone.
I agree with Councilman Starbuck that if the fees were refunded for one person, they should be refunded for the other three people. It only makes sense. They wouldn't have been charged had they waited until this new law had went into effect. So why not have these three other people grandfathered in, just as the one other person was? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no one else rise, we'll close public comment on this and bring it back to council. Councilmember Starbuck.
Well, I'll go ahead and I'll try and form a motion here that we go ahead and reimburse the three impact fees that were collected besides Mrs. Long's.
I'll give you your second on that. Any other discussion by council? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Any written communications? Nothing. Okay. And now, we will, as the agenda notes, have a discussion on item four: the annual compliance report for development impact fees per Government Code subdivision 66006 (B)1, and five-year compliance report per Government Code subsection 66001 (D) 1. And we have Management Service Director Dean Albro to answer questions, concerns from council. Floor is now open for discussion. Any questions for staff? Councilmember Mosby.
And Mr. Albro, I know you've only been in that seat, what, about a year or so?
Ten months.
Ten months. And this has been an argument and discussion of mine for a while. At two years ago plus, during the budget cycle, we had a capital improvement plan that was going to be approved via the budget without any discussion. We pulled it aside, and we asked for it to be brought back. It still hasn't been brought back. We do have a book that floats around there. But what we have, basically, the impact fees are based on the 2003-2017 Capital Improvement Plan, along with the old Maximus Impact Fee Report. And there's a lot of arcane stuff in here that has been updated. And without this, some things are being overcharged, some things are being undercharged. I don't know if the police chief knows that one of the plans is a two-story parking garage over here for PD, and by the three properties on Ocean Avenue, tear them down and put a parking garage. Is that still part of the plan? No, it was almost 20 years ago that was a plan. And a lot of the things aren't updated and haven't been updated in this. There's, I know that we're on a timeline with this, but what I'm trying to communicate about is that there's a lot of holes in this analysis here. And the money that's charged in here is expended using the capital improvement plan. One of the items in here, as well, is park impact fees. And there's recognizing the acres of developed parks. One of them is Canada Park. Well, we gave half the park away to Hancock, but it's not recognized in this report. So it shows that we have more acreage of developed parkland than we have. But there's a couple other items in there as well. And no, I've been asking, I know Councilmember Starbuck's been asking for years that we tune this up, because the impact fees are what we charge developers, who then again, when they sell a property, are charging the people to buy the property. And if you're financing your house, you're upwards of $50,000 you're covering to pay for this, to borrow the money to cover this. So it's not a small chunk of money. There's projects, other projects in here that we're not going to do. We had a discussion in the past about putting a third lane on the North Eight Street Bridge. Well, it turns out, we can't put one on there, but we're still charging developers for a potential impact. I talked to one of the South County supervisors about street impact fees, and they said, we stay away from that because it scares off development. I know we had a Taco Bell that was coming into this side of town, and because of the street impact fees, they walked away. They would have built a Taco Bell on this side. They wanted a quarter million dollars for street impact fees alone. So a lot of times, this report is on consent calendars, it was tonight, and it just gets rolled over. And I just, we have to put our foot down. I know we're on a timeline. Are we on a timeline, Mr. Albro?
This report is due December 31st.
So I know we're on a timeline, so we're going to have to put this through, but I know that we have a potential for making amendment to this.
Well, one of the things that we've been working on for last year is to actually come back with a new study. We're scheduled to come back the second week in January to reevaluate all these projects and reevaluate and bring it back to council. So it's in the making to actually reevaluate. You know, when you look at something that's 2003, and you expect it, the growth in the city that we just didn't see, yeah, a lot of these projects become kind of almost laughable, if you will, through time.
In the report, some of the important numbers are, we have undercollected $5.7 million worth of water impact fees, $6 million of sewer impact fees, and anticipated growth that didn't happen. So I think a lot of this stuff needs to be, I don't know if we're mandated, may the City Attorney tell us, are we mandated by law to update the capital improvement plan annually, or every two years, or whatever, maybe the city manager or somebody?
Yeah, I was going to say, you don't have to. The capital improvement plan is not a required document. It's one for planning purposes. Every city should have a budget with their capital improvement plan. So this one's a little different. I was going to just throw in here real quick, as places I've been before. You can either all discuss it on the dais, have, you know, everyone review it on their own, and then come back. Been in other places where they actually did an ad hoc with two council members. They reviewed all the projects for everything. They discussed it, came back with a recommendation to council saying, here's what we think should or shouldn't go forward, and trying to help narrow down the scope. So there are different ways to attack this. And if it hasn't been reviewed, if the projects haven't been reviewed in 20 years, then it's probably time for a large-scale discussion on that.
And, you know, they, we used the, well, they did 20 years ago, they used the capital improvement plan to design the impact fee study, to design the impact fees. And reading and studying about impact fees, one of the things they say is, you don't need to be in a position where they're so expensive that you curtail development. And I've heard from several developers that they couldn't do projects because the impact fees were absorbing all the profit. And ours are very high. And hearing from a South County supervisor saying, well, we back off the street impact fee because it can scare away development. We were, at one time, I think, $5,000 per peak hour trip. They did get away, discard the Central Avenue Extension project, would significantly reduce that. But when you had a, as an example, a Taco Bell coming, they estimated 99 peak hour trips. And at that time, before the reduction, you're close to $5,000 per peak hour trip is a half million dollars just for street impact fees. And you get into that position, it's time to start looking at other funding mechanisms, like grants, as South County does. They use grants to pay for a lot of their street components. And they don't burden the developer, and they get development. But it just, the reason why I wanted to pull it is that there's, I believe there's significant number, I did talk with Mr. Albro about this, there's significant numbers of errors and flaws that weren't updated and corrected as we progressed through. And we're proving in a document that, that really does need to be tuned up significantly.
If I could.
For the fire department, I think they're on station three. The third fire station, I think, is where anticipated charging people for right now. And we haven't even fixed the second one. So there's a lot of catching up needs to be done.
If I could, this report tonight is just basically what happened. So it's like, that's mandated. We show how much money we collected and what we're spending it on. We're, I'm trying to break out the capital improvement document as a budget document, not as a development impact fee study. And that's what we want to bring back separately, so they'll have different avenues. We are also working on doing a capital improvement project, but it's going to take a while. And I do want to get you guys' input. I do want, I want to come back and get your input. I want to make sure that that's moving forward as well.
Well, if I may, I hear on your report, item F, it says, "An identification of an approximate date by which the construction of the public improvement will commence if the local agency determines that the sufficient funds have been collected to complete the financing and incomplete public improvement." So if we're doing this, and we're putting dates in, but we're kind of saying, well, we don't have the money yet, but it might happen. But you're collecting a fee, and you're telling the developer, we're collecting a fee, that we might do this project someday. And I think that we need to be more real with the document. If we see that it's not going to happen, or it might be 40 years from now, we need to reevaluate. And I think it makes a more viable document. Otherwise, you're basically taxing development if you never do the project. And...
I mean, I agree with you 100%. It's definitely something that you need to keep on top of. It's not like you just do it and forget it, and we're all done with it. And I want to make sure that everybody's comfortable with whatever we have in our impact fees. So I agree with you.
One other question, if I may, on the, you know, if you get back, you had a couple supplemental documents that I'd kind of asked a little bit more discussion about, and that was, when it comes to programming, like in this case, the park improvement impact fee, meaning expensing these fees, how did Charlotte's Web Improvements get on a park improvement list?
Well, it's kind of interesting how that did. I had to do some research to figure that out, because I thought the same thing. Originally, when the trust gave it to the city, it was to build a children's library on I Street. The proposal was to use CDBG funding and the MOU. However, they didn't do anything. And eventually, CDB said, you guys have to do something, or, you know, take it off your list. And I don't know, somehow it ended up being that they were going to turn it into a park that they could put the Bookmobile at as an alternative. So I'm not sure if that's going to come to fruition, but that's how that panned out.
And I guess my question would be, when you're charging an impact fee for somebody, this isn't recognized in the park impact fee that you're billing people for as a project that's now on a list. So how do we do that? How do we charge people for something that's not identified that we're going to do?
Well, the assessment for what we're charging is not what we're, what we are spending it on. It's the assumption that we're going to fix up the parks, and that this is to be a park. And as long as we're increasing the capacity for our citizens to accommodate the build-out, then that would be an acceptable expenditure.
And so on this document as well, how did it come about that we decided to spend $1.1 million on these projects here? How was that decided?
Most all these were adopted through the biannual budget as capital improvements in the budget process.
Didn't we ask for the capital improvement to be stalled and not passed through the budget? I know we did two years ago.
I don't think so.
Okay.
But like I said, I want everybody to feel comfortable, and I think that that should be on our agenda. Definitely that we should, we want the input of everybody, and not only council, but citizens and staff, and we all move together and feel comfortable, the improvements that we want to do.
If I may, and we have to remember, the capital improvement project is different than the budget. So if we adopt a budget, we're adopting what we're going to spend that year versus what we might build today, tomorrow, next year, 10 years from now. And that's where some of these, if it's been 20 years, maybe some of these projects went back far enough that they absolutely need to be reviewed, like the H Street, you know, additional lane on that one. I think that's something we can work on to schedule. It'll take some time, just from experience. It's not a one-meeting type of situation, because there'll be a lot of discussion, excuse me, on what should be removed, what should be added, though. At this point, if things haven't really been thought through, it'll have to be a very full, long process about where are we today? Do we need a third lane? Do we need something else? What do we have to do? So it is a very long project to update your AB 1600 projects, because they're not just, capital is sort of a day-to-day. These are specific to what you would charge to a developer for the growth of the city. They're similar, but they're different.
But we, the city of Long Poak, for going back and reading the one from the '60s, they've tied both of them, even though they didn't have the impact fee, but they tied the capital projects list.
These become part of the capital projects, but when you're breaking it apart, they're separate until you merge them into the one document.
And two years ago, you were here, Mr. Throop, but it was, the capital improvement plan was in the resolution for the budget, and we pulled it off and said, bring it back separately. It never came back to us. And, you know, I didn't want to see it piecemealed through the budget. I think the rest of the council would like to have been more in tune, at least identifying as we went through here. Some of it just was rolled in the budget, we didn't dial it that deep. So I mean, maybe, Mr. Albro, do you have a plan of bringing back something? Do you have a studies going on right now, or?
Well, we've been working on the capital improvement project. You mentioned it, I think in October, November, and it's one of the things that we've been on our radar. We've been working on the AB 1600 ones. And, but, you know, it takes a long time to actually do a good capital improvement project, because you need to look at what you spend on this project. You know, how long is this project going to last? A description, a status, you know, and educate everybody. I think the capital improvement project is a very good booklet, too. And I was the one that actually designed it and did the draft, but it wasn't complete, and I didn't feel comfortable with bringing it to the council. It's definitely one of the things that I want to complete in my tenure here. And matter of fact, I want to make sure that's brought back within the next year, so it can be part of our next budget cycle.
We have 13 of these. Maybe we could lump some We have 13 of these. Maybe we could lump some of these together in bringing back. You know, I think water waste, water and refuse container, I think is pretty much a, or 12 of these is a, a no-brainer. We're pretty locked in on those. But I've...
If you wanted to address the development impact side of it, that'll be coming back in January. If we're talking about the capital improvement projects, we could bring it back in sections. We could bring it back in its totality and go through each project. It's up to you, but I'd like to kind of bridge those, I'd like to separate those two components. And because they are totally different animals, to me, the capital improvement is really a plan of what do we, what is our ultimate goal for our city? What do we want it to look like? You know, what, what, what direction do we want to go? But a development impact fee is what is the proportional amount that a builder has to pay for us to accommodate him for police, fire, and all these other fees that we're gonna be bringing back in January.
But again, a capital improvement plan designs, if you say you're, you're going to do something with the, the police station, that's a design for the capital improvement plan. Then you come back and you say, what is the impact fee of growth and development? And you do the mathematical computation. But you have to have a project to put a fee against.
Yeah, they're definitely gonna overlap and they're gonna be together, yes. And a lot of times, you'll see, too, in a good capital improvement project, and that's where I'm trying to, you know, take each project, figure out, where can we get the funding for these type of projects that people have been bringing for these number of years? And you'll see a lot of them. You'll see a lot of the funding sources as AB 1600. That's one of the things that wasn't in the other one. We didn't have funding sources. We didn't have how much we've, we spent so far. We didn't have a complete package to bring to you, and that's what we're working on right now.
And we definitely weren't putting money aside through general fund money to match. We were collecting the impact fee, but we had no general fund mechanism to cover the balance.
Yeah, we, we haven't had general fund money to do capital improvements.
So, it's kind of, how do we do it? We charge all the developers this money, but we didn't have any money to cover the balance. So, how were they legitimate projects, then?
A lot of them, we've just been doing things that have been specific to park improvements or, you know, related just to those development impacts. But not, not one that's combining resources, which would be a better way to build a city, if you will.
So, is, do the city manager, do you have a plan of bringing these back that we can? I mean, obviously, we don't want to do them all at once, but we definitely need to do something.
You don't want to do it all at once. Let me get with, with Dean and go through, and we can categorize everything, like we said here, of what are the projects and try and break out, because you do need to tie the AB 1600 to, all the projects to the AB 1600 fees. And that's what gets difficult, because then you have to deal, just like you said, with the police station. How much of that is related to a new, new development? If we're gonna be expanding the, the footprint of the city at all, then that expands how much goes towards the developer. If we're 90% built out, they're only gonna be paying essentially 10% of that new cost, so it's, it's not that much. But if we were only 50% built out, then there's a lot that can be attributed to a builder. So, we'll need to go through, and I know he's working, Dean's working on the, the capital part, but we'll also try working on this. It'd have to be after the first of the year, you know, and towards the spring, because it takes, it really does take time, having gone through this a few times. Hopefully, it won't be nearly as long as the zoning update, but it did take a long time to get the, the AB 1600 in places I've been before, many, a number of months to get it done.
I've been waiting four years. And now, and now we've kind of got a, you know, that's kind of why I'm pushing a little bit, so that we make sure, I trust that we, we do something to, to move it forward, but...
If you want my plan, my plan was to bring it back, probably between March and June. And either, like I said, either in sections or totality. But I have a lot of work to do. I gotta do our financial publication. It's due December 31st. And then we have a lot of reporting due to the state by January 31st, so I'm kind of bombarded. But that is the time zone that I want to start. And we've already been working on this. So, it's, it takes a long time to get everybody's input, like, what is this project? What does this project mean? How can we pay for this project? Do you have funding sources? You know, a lot of times, you get into a lot of the, the public works ones, they're, they're very complicated. And same with the utilities, when we're talking about how many lines of water we want to fix, or, you know, sewer lines we want to fix. So, each one takes a lot of interaction with the divisions and departments to put it together and compile it. And we, I thought we did a pretty good stab at the first one, but it wasn't complete. And, and definitely, we're gonna do it this, this budget cycle.
Yeah, I guess what I'm getting at as well, understand the importance to the developer. And I think the, the council up here, that we believe that what we ever are charging is, is close to actual as, is, you know, as, as we're planning, not, not, not some things, I, I don't, you know, that we're not going to do.
And I totally agree. When you have a plan to build out, and I don't know how many, they were talking 16, 20% build out in 10 years. And that just didn't happen. We had almost no build out. So, yeah, you gotta be realistic when you're doing these. And sometimes, like this one, I think got way outdated, probably 10 years ago. So, it's definitely overdue, and, and I'm looking forward to bringing it back in January.
You said January or March? Which, which one you're bringing?
January for the development impact fee study. The, the capital improvement one's gonna be, I'm gonna come back, but it's gonna be a few times that I'm gonna come back. And I'll talk about different sections, and we'll go through the projects. And I, I really want your input. I will get you some blank forms, so you can actually handwrite what you think you'd like to see, so we can do the research for you. Let's see if it's feasible, see how much it would cost, maybe find funding sources, so... But I'm talking two different documents, the development impact fee study, which will be in January, and then the capital improvement, which will be part of the next budget cycle. But we'll be working on it starting after January, probably February on, so...
We'll see how far apart they are. I don't, we'll... Okay.
Councilmember Cordova.
So, I get that the development, uh, street impact fees are a different animal from the capital improvement plan and the budget altogether. However, I do think that in order for the City of Lompoc to ever have any kind of positive infrastructure changes and, and, and look towards the future, I think that these all need to align. We need to get to that point. And even though, Dean, you say that it's not meant to set it and forget it, it has been set and it was forgotten. And I know since I sat in this chair in January, and then we went into the budget season, that was the one thing that I kept asking for in every meeting, well, where is our capital improvement plan? How are we doing budgets? How are we planning for the future of Lompoc if we don't have an up-to-date plan on what the future of Lompoc or what this infrastructure is gonna look like? And yet, we continue to deteriorate and we continue to talk about the deterioration of the city, but we don't plan. So, yes, I understand and I completely respect the fact that it is gonna take a lot of hard work. It's gonna take a lot of hours. I just want to see it get started. And I know that people might say, you know, it needs to get done. And at the same time, whether people want to acknowledge it on the dais or off the dais, the, the staff shortage impacts the level and the quantity of work that the city can produce. So, please do not be fooled and think that, that doesn't. It absolutely does. Every time we decide to cut back our, our limbs, we're just, you know, dying a slow death. I don't entirely agree with the fact that street impact fees are curbing our development. I think we all know that there is a great, a grand list of reasons why the City of Lompoc doesn't grow, can't grow, or it has been stumped by, you know, in, in recent conversations, even the county. So, there's a myriad of reasons why. If you get a big developer in here, they're gonna pay your street impact fees because they have a big development and they want to see that. They need that to come, they need that development to come through. If you have a small business such as a Taco Bell, yeah, they might, you know, have an issue. I get it. I understand it. Small business, big business, I get it. But at the same time, a, a little, small business like a Taco Bell is also not gonna impact our general fund to the level where it's gonna take us out of a, out of a budget shortfall, although it will help. It helps to improve that. I just want to make sure that I, my sentiment is clear, that I don't think that our street impact fees entirely, you know, curb our developers from coming to the table and wanting to develop in our city. I think there's a myriad of things that, that, that affect that. So, those are my two cents.
Thank you. For clarification purposes from the city attorney, since this was originally on the consent calendar and had the ability to have public comment, are we required to open the floor for a public comment on this item?
No.
Thank you. All right. So, we will close council discussion. This is a report that does need to be filed. We've heard concerns and clarifications. I will take a motion. Councilmember Mosby.
If, I can take this in, in two parts. One part is to bring back Attachment 25 for us to make adjustments to this. To bring back that in, I don't know if you can bring it back in a couple of months or not. It's the Park Improvement Impact Fee Program.
Yeah, it would be great to kick off the capital improvement program, even though I know this is a small section. I mean, you look at all the capital improvements, you're probably talking, you know, maybe 1600 park fees are probably only 5%, but it'd be a good one to kick off. And then maybe even bring some other sections, if you wanted to, back as well.
But for clarification, to file your report, you need this portion approved.
Yeah, this one has to be approved. This is just a, a report of what happened.
I'd make another motion with it all together, but I wanted to make a motion of this one to come back for us to...
First.
To come, yeah, to come after...
Sure.
A couple, two, three months or something, you can get this to us, so we can...
Sure.
And along with this would be not just the analytics behind it, but the ability to say, yes, we want to do this, or no, we don't want to do that.
Definitely do that.
All right. Well, I'll second the motion to bring back Attachment 25 first.
And then, if I can get a third, I'll just, I'll just piggyback.
I'll give you a third.
Actually, we need to take a vote on that because that's the...
It sounds to me like it's just one motion, to approve staff recommendation and then also direct staff to bring back Attachment 25 for possible amendments.
All right. So, you want to vote on that one first? Seven years in?
That, that's all one.
There we go. His motion, right there.
And you second that?
Yeah, I'll second the attorney's motion that Mosby made.
Thank you. Any other discussions or questions before we vote? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. We'll open for the final oral communication regarding city matters for two minutes. And please step forward to the podium if there is something you'd like to speak to.
Good evening. Starting to mist outside, mayor, councilpeople, and especially the people of Lompoc. During the last city council meeting, the Bailey Avenue annexation was discussed. And almost everyone who spoke in favor of the annexation mentioned all that good general fund money that's just gonna start rolling in when all those houses are built. Now, I know that Council Malawi is going to do a fabulous job. And we're probably the closest that we've been to enlarging the footprint of Lompoc. But even in the best of circumstances, it's gonna be a while till those houses are built. But I think we could all agree that we could use that good general fund money right now, right? Well, the good news is that every registered voter in the City of Lompoc can do something about it right away. And actually, three months from today, on Tuesday, March 3rd, an election is gonna be held. Now, this is the presidential primary election, so it's gonna be a little bit more exciting for Democrats. But everyone should get in on the action, because we all will finally be able to vote on making Lompoc just a little bit better by voting for and passing Measure I 2020, the 1% sales tax increase. So, people of Lompoc, if you're not registered to vote, register to vote. It's easy. And if you're registered to vote, but your kids or grandkids or family members or friends aren't registered to vote, bug them until they're registered to vote. And remember, you need to re-register every time you move, even if it's just across the street. And finally, vote, because if you don't, if we don't pass Measure I 2020 on March 3rd, this little town is just gonna probably get a little bit more dead-ridden and crummy and possibly more dangerous. So, in three months from today, on Tuesday, vote yes on Measure I 2020. It just makes sense for a better Lompoc.
Thank you. Seeing no one else rise, we'll close oral communications and bring it back for council comments and meeting reports. Councilmember Mosby.
Recently, on the forums, I was reading that there's concerns around the agricultural land by megalithic school and potential dust issues. People weren't sure which way to go. People are pointing fingers at everybody. Being the council's representative on Air Pollution Control District, there is someplace to go. You can contact the APCD. That's Area, Santa Barbara County Air Pollution Control District. They have a monitoring station they could put out there. And you'd be looking for what they call a PM, particle mass 10 microns, or the 2.5 microns. So, there is a way to get this. People are concerned about this for the, the school out there. There is a monitoring station that could be put up there and set out to, to watch. I don't think we're gonna be getting dust for a little while, but there were some significant concerns about, about the, the dust. I also represented the City of Lompoc at the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments meeting. At this meeting, they reformulated a Highway 154 Safety Committee, which officially was going to be backed by the SB CAG. There was a 166 Safeway Committee, Safety Committee, and they, they had significant movement. I kind of stirred the pot a little bit to see what kind of momentum I could get over there at SB CAG to do a central county highway safety committee, because I think our highways are dangerous as well. And it gets staged this way. The, the groups get together, they put a alliance together, and they establish this. And the next thing you know, all the grant money is fixing their highway. I did mention that we have both Highway 1 and 246 and a bridge that's 1939. So, what I'm putting out the feelers at, I'm not asking for it to be designed as a council commission, but the public, reach out to me, get ahold of me if you are interested on a central county highway safety committee. We can try to formulate to see how we can put this together. It's gathering data. It's collecting numbers. And it's when it's time to go and speak at the SB CAG meetings, that we have a group that's well-formulated and thought out to come and lobby and petition for the fixing of our highways. So, just put the feelers out that way. I did mention to the city manager, he thought it'd be a good idea. But just trying to lay the groundwork on that. It might be a, a formal commission, something down the road. I know in this committee, they had two county supervisors, a couple mayors, and a few others. But they're very good at formalizing and strategizing. I think it's important for our community here to, to do much the same. So, reach out, find me, email me, call me. City clerk can point you the right direction to get ahold of me. And we'll see where it goes from there. The other item I had was a Public Safety Commission meeting a couple of months ago. The Public Safety Commission had four items that they wanted to bring to the council. And I believe they were unanimously approved. But I don't know where we stand on having those brought forward. One was increasing the number of meeting times. Another was a camera component, and I forget the other two components right now off the top of my head. But I don't know what it would take, if I need to make a motion for that together, or do they need to come to the podium? But what can we get next direction?
I'm working with staff on getting those to the council.
Okay. Soon, right?
Of course.
Okay. It was well-attended meeting. There was, I think, 110, 125 people there. It was an impressive meeting that went on. And there was, I think, it was a good, solid meeting. There were some comments later, earlier today about what's going on. And I think the gentleman that came up, if maybe he could talk with the chief, I think the chief has some answers to some of the questions. But I know that they, they are, most of these terrible crimes have been solved. And I know they're on top of it. So, I, I think it's important, I know the chief makes himself available. So, if, if people feel that, talk to them. Because I think you'll find that the, they are doing a job, a good job of, of getting out there. And it's hard to, you know, surround up some of the insanity that's going on. You know, they only do so much. And I know they are doing a great job. Thank you.
Councilmember Vega.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Starbuck.
No reports.
Councilmember Cordova.
On November 21st, I attended a public input meeting that was held in regards to economic development, small business, and discussion also took place about housing. It was a good meeting for me to attend, a very eye-opening meeting to discuss all those three components and how they affect our community and countywide, how we can better be equipped as well. And it's always important for Lompoc to have a representation when we have meetings that are, you know, county, because Lompoc kind of, you know, tends to be left out. So, that's my report.
Thank you. Bear with me on this. I participated in the Transgender Remembrance Event. I participated in the transgender remembrance event. Thank you to those who organized it. As I said, I have family that is, so honoring those that we have lost is important to me. I attended the Lompoc Valley Medical Center's Public Safety Power Shut-Off Meeting that PG&E presented to better support their presentation regarding what happens in Lompoc when PG&E has a PSPS. I attended the Vandenberg Air Force Changing Command. The county-level organizations that deal with child abuse and child services had their joint meeting for the year. I was invited to attend that and hear that they have a action plan they're going to work on jointly, and Lompoc is going to be their focus next year, so that is good news for us. The Econ Alliance held their annual fundraiser dinner, and the focus for that dinner, which I was in attendance with the city manager at, was the Pale Blue Dot Project up at the Y on the Hancock Adams area, and the base presenting its potential project to build out their industrial and commercial zone area, which would potentially bring several jobs to the area with build-out by entities such as Firefly and some of the other private launch companies that are looking to expand in the area. I attended the Santa Barbara County Public Input Meeting that Councilmember Cordova mentioned, the Houck Stadium revamp for the groundbreaking ceremony this morning. That's very exciting, and I want to thank all of those that donated to that and are moving this forward. It will be a world-class competitive field, but also open to the public, and that is going to be very exciting. When it's completed, we will have access to that. The lights will be able to be on in the evenings, and we will be able to use it as a community. So I thank all of those who've organized that. I attended the Interfaith Thanksgiving Celebration, and last but not least, the City Youth Basketball Open Ceremony, and Shop Lompoc. I hope everybody took advantage of Shop Small, Shop Lompoc Saturday. I will say I did my very best to put everything back into the local economy as I finished my shopping, but I know there were some great local businesses open all day long and was very excited to get out and discover some new ones. For the community, the community is full of vets, and on Thursday, December 5th, the Disabled Americans Veterans Chapter 91 is having its military luncheon, but starting at 8:30 is claims. So if you need assistance with anything and then would like to stay for lunch at 11:00, the Lompoc Veteran Memorial Building is the location there on 100 East Locust, and they will have National Service Officers there in attendance to help process claims and answer veterans' questions for disabled vets from 8:30 to noon. So please pass that along. And then the other event that's going on on Saturday is Toys for Tots, the annual fly-in on Saturday, beginning from 10 o'clock till 2:00 PM at the airport. There'll be a bouncy house for kids, and the law enforcement and aviation aircrafts will be out. There'll be a Santa Maria barbecue. Just bring an unwrapped toy for ages between 1 and 17 as part of coming out and experiencing what they do for our community. And then I look forward to seeing everyone at Friday's parade. Hopefully, the rain will stay at the sprinkle level as currently predicted. So thank you all for being here tonight. We'll adjourn till our next meeting of Lompoc City Council on December 17th at 6:30 PM.